Sorry for the being a little late. And Ron sends his apologies, he couldn't make it this evening. So we're gonna open the meeting, call to order, and please, everybody rise from the Fledge of Allegiance. Councilor Calhoun, please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Councilor Ingman, Councilor Calhoun, the President, Councilor Christopher, Councilor Boncory.
Here.
Councilor DeMarco.
Here.
Councilor Farino.
Here.
Councilor LaCanti, Vice President Latieri.
Yeah. Okay, seeing the quorum, we are good to go. Circulated were minutes from October 15th. Anybody have any questions or would like to make a motion?
Would like to make a motion?
Motion made by Councilor Farino, seconded by Councilor Boncory. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. General information where we have new bond council and speaking tonight will be Jay Gonzalez to give us a little information about his new duties and how it affects the town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay.
Hello, everybody. So I was asked by town manager and his team to come in the beginning of this meeting to just introduce myself. Jay Gonzalez, I'm at Hinkley Allen, a partner at Hinkley Allen Law Firm downtown. We have a public finance practice there, we're nationally ranked in this work, and serve as bond counsel for governmental entities like you who, whenever you need to borrow money to finance new improvements, we help you do that. This is something I used to do a number of years ago at a firm that was called Palmer and Dodge, and I represented most of the cities and towns in the state at that time before going into state government and doing various other things where I got to know some of I am really thrilled to be a part of your team. You have a very strong team at Town Hall. I've had the pleasure over the last few weeks of working closely with them on a number of items, including one that's before you tonight, a housekeeping item on the Center Business District funds that you already voted in June, and this is a technical matter related to notice where you're just being asked to re-vote what you've already done. But we've already started digging in and working closely with them, and we'll continue to work closely with them to help make sure that whatever borrowing you're wanting to do, we are helping to make the process as easy as possible for you and help you meet your goals. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
Questions from the council?
Welcome you forward, Jay, and thank you for coming to Wentworth, and I know you'll be a great asset to us.
Thank you.
Any comments from my town manager?
You come with a glowing reputation. I think we've had a great working relationship since we've kind of entertained this work and, you know, even picking out these type of little things that we want to try to do procedurally correctly is very important to me because compliance and reduction of liabilities are the utmost importance to me. So you all catching that just shows me that this will be money well spent on behalf of the town.
Well, thank you. And we won't be saving you money, as you know.
That's a better way to think of it.
Thank you very much, Jay. Any other questions from the council?
Not at this time, no.
Just want to welcome you and, as I mentioned, repetitiveness of services is costly, and we hope that you do well by us and take good care of us.
Thank you. Well, I'm thrilled to be here, so thanks.
Thank you so much, Jay. I appreciate you taking the time.
We have three public hearings tonight. The first public hearing is to transfer citation.
Citation.
No, I was told that that was out.
What happened?
I thought it...
She's not here.
Right.
Somebody here to record.
Just to make mention, there was a placement for a citation for Judy Rackau. I was told prior to the meeting that she would not be here, and we were gonna do the citation on...
I hope it's next week, but she has a family matter, so we'll have to check.
Okay, so it's either gonna be the 17th or December 5th, the 4th.
November 19th or December 3rd.
Okay, December 3rd. See, that wasn't a gender item, but with Judy unable to be here, we thought it would be better to wait until she was here to present her citation. So there are three public hearings tonight. The first one is to transfer eighty-nine thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty-six cents from the MWRA Water Capital Project to Watersore Fund, Wentworth Shore Drive. I will open the public hearing. Now I'll ask the DPW Director to speak on this.
Good evening. So this is, the Wentworth Shore Drive project, to give everybody a quick update, or a quick refresher, actually, is initiated during the DCR's Wentworth Beach Marina project. As DCR got into that project, although we brought it, informed them early on in the project that we had an old water main up there, they came to determine that they wouldn't be able to do their full street reconstruction without danger of rupturing that old main. The town, so they had an interest of replacing it. The town had an interest of getting a hundred-year-old pipe out of the system, which is the main trunk line. So at the time, former town manager McCann sat down with Commissioner Roy, and the DCR already had a contractor under the contract. So the agreement was that the town would contribute, at the time, a million dollars to the project, which was well over a two-million-dollar project, so it was a great deal for the town. And it got DCR to be able to do the work that they intended to do up there. Somehow or somewhere along the line, maybe after MDI gave the true cost back to DCR, the project rose from, Wentworth was being asked to contribute one million eighty-nine thousand as opposed to one million. But prior to that ask, the town had already put an MWRA loan application in to pull four million one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the zero-interest loan program to fund three projects, one being Contract Five, which was eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, one being the Wentworth Shore Drive project, which we thought was one million dollars, and the remainder, the 2.24 million, would fund the CBD project, which was still in engineering, so we didn't have a true cost to it. When the language of the authorization was put in, it was the understanding of the then town manager and the prior CFO that the language basically was more flexible, the remainder of the funds for the two projects, for the eight, Contract Five and Water Main project, the remainder would go towards the Wentworth Shore Drive project. So when the extra eighty-nine thousand dollars came in, they chose to just absorb that money in the future funds for the CBD, and that's what happened. So that eighty-nine thousand dollars extra was paid out of appropriated money for the later project of the CBD. Dick Hinkston, more recently, in Anna, looked more closely at that language, and it was a little bit more specific. It actually named true cost to each project, so it in turn, by absorbing that eighty-nine thousand, put the current CBD project in an eighty-nine thousand dollar deficit. So what we're looking to do, we're looking closely at it, we have some earned interest from an MMDT account, which, MWRA puts money into this account, and I'll let Anna speak a little bit more about it, but it's interested accrued, so we're gonna use that accrued interest, which is essentially what's earned interest. So it's not money coming out of a certain park to offset that eighty-nine thousand dollars, and that's what that transfer is all about.
And I believe the money is roughly a hundred and forty thousand in interest that, but we have to go to MWRA to ask their approval to make sure it's a worthy project to use that money for. My understanding is we have their blessing, and that's why we're going forward with this.
Yes, sir.
And I will say, it did come out of Finance Committee tonight with a positive recommendation. Is there anybody here wanting to speak in favor of this item? Anybody that wants to speak against this item? Seeing none, I'll close our public hearing and open the next public hearing. Next public hearing is to, Town Council shall adopt the supplemental school department operating budget fiscal '20 increased by fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and fourteen I'll ask CFO Anna Friedman to please speak on this.
Sure. So when the town of Wentworth's budget was approved in June, the budget assumed Chapter Seventy numbers that were published at the time in the House, the final budget passed by the House Representatives of the state. So the final state budget, the twenty, 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 the 2020 GAA General Appropriations Act was not final yet, so we did not have the final Chapter Seventy number until after the town's budget had been approved. That final budget number from the state included an increase to Chapter Seventy funds for the town that was one hundred and six thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars over what was approved in the town council's budget for the town. However, at the same time, the charter school reimbursement that we receive when students go to a charter, go to a charter school, the budget approved for the town of Wentworth had assumed, had assumed something, had assumed forty-nine thousand sixteen dollars in the mirror over what was actually provided in the final state budget. And so the net effect of those two numbers, one oh six seven thirty minus the forty-nine oh one six, means the net increase to education needs that the town is receiving this year is fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars, and this motion would, how I take those funds directly to the schools, because they are related to Chapter Seventy.
Now, I will say, there is a formula for net school spending, which we do meet. So technically, these funds come to the general fund, and we thought it best, I know I did, and I know the town manager as well as the rest of the council, thought it was best to try to have this money go directly to the schools, and that's what the motion is about. Anyone that would like to speak in favor of this? Superintendent Howard.
Hi, Lieutenant. Of course, I'm in favor of any additional funding for the school district, but I would just like to, you know, certainly thank Anna for the explanation and the work done around the Chapter Seventy, additional funds that have come to the town. Everybody knows the Chapter Seventy formula, the meaning of the word. Hopefully, we will benefit from that. Certainly not as significant a benefit as Paul River and Worcester and some of the larger communities with a different economic status than our community has. So the communication between Anna and I has been excellent, so I fully understand the drop in the prediction for charter school students, and it just makes sense. Some folks would think of additional Chapter Seventy, ninety-one hundred and six dollars that comes into the town, which should all go to the school, but the additional monies that came into the town were offset by some drops in other funding that was actually school funding and for charter students. So I just want to thank Anna for the communication and Austin for making sure that the recommendation came through today.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of this? Anyone like to speak against this? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing, opening the third public hearing. Town Council appropriate five million five hundred twenty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars for the purpose of financing the engineering design construction of the Wentworth Center Business District project. CFO Friedman, can you speak on that again, please?
Sure. So this is the matter that our bond counsel, Jay Gonzalez, just mentioned, that it's just a technicality to re-vote the vote that already occurred, just to remedy a notice matter that he noticed in our diligence to finalize the paperwork.
So this is something that we have already approved, we have, the figures aren't changing, the numbers aren't changing, it's just procedural, and we want to make sure we're doing everything correctly. Anyone like to speak in favor of this? Anyone like to speak against this? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. Public comment. Mr. Riley.
Thank you. Tom Reddick in Cudges Park Road. I want to go over some of the, you know, the Center Business District zoning has been a topic of discussion for several years now. I just want to go over from our point of view of the history of this thing and why you feel that we've been let down and promises that were made to us weren't kept appropriately. Came here in the late summer of 2017, suggested to the council that there were a couple of problems. A master plan map had a distorted map in it that showed private homes that weren't in the district as part of the Center Business District. I also took a look at the zoning, and I suggested that it was a little bit too dense, too high, insufficient parking and so forth, and it would cause problems for the surrounding neighborhood. Also, at the time, it was clear that there was a perception, and I don't want to just say it's a perception, I don't want to say who was right or wrong, but the people who lived in the neighborhood feel that they were not appropriately included when the zoning was set relative to the Center Business District past. My suggestion was, well, let's convene a meeting, let's talk about it, let's open this up, let's review it, let's give everybody a chance to be heard, and if people think it's appropriate to adjust it, we can do it. If people think it should stay the same, that could be done. But the map certainly had to be changed. Well, Terry Delahanty, as acting town manager, did an extensive legal memo, concluding January of 2018 that none of those homes were in the district, and the map was in fact improper and misleading and not accurate. Suggested to the council that it would be a good idea to codify some map that reflected those legal findings, because the maps that the town was using didn't actually clarify appropriately. Well, nothing happened. So in May of 2018, many of us filed a petition with the council under the Relative Article and the Charter that allows people to petition the government and get a decision. The Charter calls for a decision in ninety days. Rather than take the action in ninety days or address the matter at all, the council waited two-hundred-and-fifty days and then just summarily dismissed the petition, using what I think was a parliamentary gimmick. There was no discussion of the merits of the case, but starting in October, going back to October of 2018, several months after the petition was filed, we were told repeatedly that the town was gonna conduct a review of the Center Business District. First, it was gonna be, a committee was gonna be established, then the Planning Board and the Board of Appeals was gonna be involved. In January, when the council dismissed the petition, was told, oh, don't worry, Tom, we're gonna, we're gonna take this matter up. Town then hired a consultant to fix the map problem, hired the same consultant who drew the fraudulent map in the first place, who created this graph of misleading, inaccurate things, one of which called for an expansion of the Center Business District in a way that would have been illegal, improper, and a completely spot zoning. So rather than define the existing thing, they suggested moving further and including Anyway, the planning board finally was able to, the planning board, as you know, finally put a map in front of you that's by and large accurate. I think some of the amendments that have been suggested faring are not well considered, because you can't rezone by re-zoning. You have to follow the Chapter Forty-Eight procedure, post a notice, hold hearings, get a recommendation from the planning board, bring it to the council, and adopt a two-thirds vote. But I just feel that we've been, we've been grossly misled by this promise that this review would take place. It's repeated, and, you know, if somebody wasn't gonna do it, told me, Tom, we're not gonna take it up, we're gonna leave everything the way it is, fine, but when you promise over and over to do something and then fail to do it and don't follow through, I think it sets a bad tone for the way that government at the time would be viewed by the people in the time.
Thank you. And I just want to make an address to that in case anybody, at the last council meeting, I think Councilor Christopher uses council privilege to put off the voting on that, and the voting on that will take place at the next council meeting, which will also be at the Senior Center, which will have more, a bigger venue for people to speak about. And I will say, I think that the changes that were made in respect to the family homes that abut the, that abut the business district, I think the planning board did do a good job of that, and I think they did address your concerns. But that vote will be taken by the council at the next meeting, which will be at the Senior Center. But thank you for your comments, Tom. Greatly appreciated. Jack?
Jack Dowd, Precinct Three. There was a public forum at the high school auditorium about a year and a half ago, and I presented some paperwork to the board and to the general public. I have copies of the paperwork that I handed out that night. I'd like you to read it once again, because we are talking about Ingleside Park. And I was just handed a piece of paper, a good piece of paper, tonight, about an opinion, excuse me, given to the town, or given to the board about the property at 151 Pauline Street.
Is it 141 or 151?
What? 151.
151.
Thank you. I talked about this at that public forum. It was the same public forum that Ron Vettia proposed a drawing that showed a colossal structure along Pauline Street and Walden Street and Waldemar Ave, forty-eight feet on the sidewalk, to be developed on 7.55 acres of land that he claims is not Ingleside I guess the town has done some investigating, and came up with a lot of information that is very favorable to a developer. One of the reasons I'm opposed to developing Ingleside Park, and they're talking about putting Ingleside Park in the Center Business, or the school property, or whatever property they think they can develop that, the 7.55 acres, and the 7.55 acres is mentioned in this brief that everybody has, I guess. Like I said, the opinions of the people researching these deeds is very favorable to developers. If you put any part of that Ingleside Park or school property or town property in the Center Business District, it gives the right for the developer to build forty-eight feet with no parking. As you might imagine, that's a very favorable position to be in if you're a developer buying that property. Most properties that are developed around the surrounding communities provide parking, of course. If a person buys that property, he has the right to provide no parking for his development. Getting back to this piece of paperwork that I gave to you, the Boston Evening Transcript of 1902, it was just a little bit of research that I did and presented to the town, and it seems to be being pushed aside rather than investigated. As it says here, approximately, and there's a map on the second page, by the way, that shows the old high school as was built in, I guess, eighteen ninety-five, and added on to in nineteen ten, that comprises 1.55 acres. The rest of the property is considered to be, by this Boston Evening Transcript story, the first park consisting of thirteen acres, is the first park in the town of Wentworth. But otherwise, the manager and system manager, I guess, put this piece together, saying that this is not really the case. At one point, talking to the town manager, Mr. Faison, about six or eight months ago, I questioned Mr. Faison about Ingleside Park. He told me that since it wasn't, Ingleside Park wasn't in the National Register of Parks, that it really wasn't a park. And that's the last time I talked to Mr. Faison. To get a story like that, and to be summarily dismissed about an argument that I had that it is a park, was, I think, outrageous. I think this should be investigated, 151, the thirteen acres. I asked Mr. Rodriguez if he had the information for the improvements done with grant money to Ingleside Park, and it was only twenty years ago that these improvements were made, with a grant of over a million dollars. He told me that he can't find that paperwork, and this was only twenty years ago. They went through a lot of effort to go back a hundred and thirty years ago, or fifty years ago, to find the information that is very favorable for the developer, yet they can't find something, the information that is needed to investigate what is and isn't Ingleside Park. I find that very unnerving, to tell you the truth. I'd like to know who is representing the townspeople against developers that want to develop a piece of property on parkland that does not require any parking. I don't think this board should do or make any of those decisions this year. I think the next board, and then leave it to the next board to be holding the plump, so to speak. I think these decisions should be made by the new board after new research is done about Ingleside Park. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. Any other public comment? Karen?
Just a couple of things. As the Wardens, Precinct Five, I want to thank all my election workers that came in that day. We had a kind of a slow day, but I do appreciate all the help. We had four-hundred-and-ninety-one voters come in and had thirty absentee ballots, which is very, very low for our precinct, and I was very disappointed, but I guess people just didn't want to vote. I wanted to congratulate council appearing for voting another four years, and also the other five newly elected councils, and the council president-elect, may of course be with you. Also, tonight, on tonight's, the Business, there's four substantial transfers, and I was wondering, and I know the town manager doesn't like to answer questions, but I was just wondering, what was the total amount of free cash that the town did receive?
The total amount of free cash was two million five hundred twenty-three thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars.
Thank you very much.
I believe. You got it, huh? Yeah? Thank you, Karen. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Correspondence, I do not have any. I don't know if Ron had any, but I have not had any passed on. Committee reports, Finance Committee did meet this evening on two items that were under public hearings. They both came out with favorable recommendations. Miller Field Committee met last evening and discussed the progress of the fieldhouse along with a couple of other items. The fieldhouse, most of the fixtures are in the bathrooms, all the switches are done, the exterior lighting is done, HVAC is almost complete. The only holdup now, and it's not really a holdup, is we're ordering bathroom petitions, which are about a three- to four-week lead time, and then that should pretty much wrap up, I believe, most of the items. We're also waiting for windows, because there are three openings now where the concession stand was, two of them facing the football field and one of them facing Cross Street, and we just want to make sure we're compliant with the windows we're getting, and we want to make sure we're getting the right window, so we're waiting for those also. There was also, there was talk about replacing a shed that the commission had removed earlier in the project at the golf course, and we had also discussed, as we mentioned at the last meeting, on the tennis courts and the RFP, and we're just waiting, again, with new bond council, to make sure we're doing the right thing with that, so that is, I don't want to say on hold, but we're just waiting to get back some information on that. And that is it on...
They're gonna do a block two-two on Friday to do the FF and E to the fieldhouse.
Anything else? The last is Precinct One Neighborhood Meeting, Councilor Farino.
Thank you. We went on on April 29th at the Lyceum in the E.B. Newton. We had about ten people that attended. Some of the concerns from my constituents were streetlights around town that were out, and discussed that with Steve Callar, and they got it addressed right away, and he just needs to know when they're out and what poll they're on, and then we'll get to them as soon as they can. And, but they like to do them in lots, four or five or six at a time, so it's not as costly to the town, because we have a private contract that does it.
Yeah. So, again, it'll be included in my budget ask. I do think that the town should be entering into a streetlight contract, so that we can be more specific as to when these repairs will be made. It is, as you say, right now, we're in a situation where we're hiring a private contract that is not under contract. is not under contract, so one scheduling is an issue, but to bring somebody in just for one light, they're charging us a day rate, so whether they fix one light or they fix ten lights while they're in, it's the same price. So, it's irresponsible to bring in somebody on Monday to bring, and so, yeah, we group them, we try to get at least ten outages, and then we try to schedule. So, it's not an ideal situation at the moment, but that's how we will go on about the contract.
Thanks. And we did discuss the CBD and the concerns about the Article 97, that the land is properly invented and that any legal issues that are involved in it are handled correctly, and that was about it.
Thank you very much. Town manager?
Sure. So, my report's a little different this week because it's more of introducing new items to you all and the public. First is C Click Fix. It was something that was funded in the budget for this year. What it is, is a work order management system for our DPW department. So, when they are doing the good work that they're doing out in the community and are assigning tasks, they can do it through this system. Where this interacts with the community, though, is that you can go to cclickfix.com on your phone, you can download an app, you can go on your computer, actually have the app open right on my phone. The last work order that was put in was for a street sign on Terrence Ave concerning the stop sign being dangling, and that was at 3:12 PM. We want people to be able to feel like they can be in contact with our department heads 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That sign or the pothole or the lights may not be fixed right that second, but we want to give people the confidence that they know that their work order has been submitted, they have a reference number to refer back to, and that over time, we can set some of these service level agreements with the community of if we know how much we budgeted for lights, we do lights every two weeks, and that's when, it should be something that's filled within fourteen days. During the summer with potholes, maybe we can say, we get to the point that, yeah, we can fix every pothole within forty-eight hours. We can't do that, though, if we're not keeping track of all the work that Steve's department is doing and we're not taking credit for the work that's done. So, this is a great way for us to interact with the community in a different way. People can still call into his office, they can still call into my office, you all can email my office and things like that. It's just another way to interact with the department and submit work orders. And if this is successful, we're going to be looking for other opportunities to interact with this system because we really think that this can be part of our communication strategy with the entire community. It can be a way for the community to interact with us and us to make sure that we're checking off the work that we're doing, which ultimately is what I want DPW to get credit for the work that they're doing. So, good thing that's in place. It's on the homepage of our website. You can just go to cclickfix.com and look up Winthrop. If it's on your phone and you download the app, it pulls up your location, so it'll tell you where you're in Winthrop. Four hundred, five hundred something things have been resolved since it launched last week, so it's good. Like, it's something that's nice to have, and I had pushed for in the budget, and now it's come to fruition. Do you want to add anything, Steve?
The link is also on the DPW website as well, so whether you go on the town's website and visit, click on DPW, you'll find the address as well. It is, it's a very good software. It helps in many ways. It allows us, one, to educate the public on procedures. You know, once you open up a work order, you will get an acknowledgement that it is open. It offers, neither department head, an opportunity to give you an explanation as to how we are addressing those types of work requests. So, a sidewalk repair, for instance, is typically done through an annual contract, so if you call in a sidewalk, it may not mean that it's getting fixed tomorrow. We'll certainly inspect it. If it's a hazard, we may make a temporary repair on it, but it gives you information that we do rely on the annual contract to, you know, to actually do the bulk of sidewalk replacements. So, it's just an opportunity for me to interact with, you know, in my department, to interact with the community. And at the end of a work order, you'll get a return email if you set up, if you create an account, which is kind of asked of you as you go through the process, you'll get a follow-up email, and you'll be informed that the work order has been closed. So, so far, it was a lot to be trained on, a lot to take in. I'd be, I wouldn't be honest if I didn't say we were still wrapping our arms around it. Everybody in the office is doing a great job, but, you know, so far, it's been a great software to use, and we think it will be useful for the community.
Thanks for that, Steve. Also, please take pictures if you submit work orders. They're the easiest way for us to decipher the work being requested because sometimes you say something's wrong with the fence, and it's a big fence, and you can't find, like, it's just, give us the better idea of what you're looking for sometimes, and it can be helpful. So, that's one thing, and we're excited for that. Number two, I gave to all of the councilors a printout from Zen City. What this is, is it's a communications tool for us to be able to encapsulate more of the town's conversation. You bring, Karen, you bring up how many people voted, and I think it's unfortunate because it's not necessarily reflecting all of the sentiments of the community unless we have 100% people coming out to vote. We have these discussions in these meetings, and we may be missing some of the public conversation. So, the point of this tool is for my office and people around town to be able to understand what's actually happening in the online conversations. So, this is a report from the month of October, just going over what's publicly available. So, things that the town is putting out, things that people are putting out publicly about the town. It does sentiment analysis, so you can say if it's positive, neutral, or negative. There are topics that are trending. One thing that came up that was a big deal was when power was lost and people were having discussions about the marketplace. It had, like, it talks about what that conversation looked like. So, I don't want these conversations online just to live online. I want them to be part of these bigger conversations, and I'm talking with the company about our minutes from the meetings and what's being said in public comment also being put into the same wealth of information so that we can see, you know, is public comment generally negative? Is it generally positive? Let's try to understand what's happening there and include it in all of the conversations and try to talk about as much as what's going on here rather than just having our segmented kind of silos where people have their own thoughts about things. So, we're going to be using this. Anyone who is the admin of a private group in town, I am more than happy to give this information and this tool to you. I want people to understand what's happening within their groups, the townwide discussion and things like that. I want the people who are admins of that group to know if the group is being positive about things or negative, or if certain people in the group are abusing the group and things like that. I want to give them this tool. So, it's something that, like, I'm not spying on anyone. I want everyone to be able to use this tool and understand what's happening within their own conversations because, again, I just want it to be included in the bigger conversations that we have here because not everyone can come out on a Thursday night, as evidenced by the room right now, or a Tuesday night or some of the other times that we have meetings. So, just another thing for us to use, and I will continue to pass on this information as I see it come through, and if they have any insightful reports, I will be sure to pass those on. I have free cash to go over that we have all of our certifications from the state on as well. Is that necessary for you all, or is that something that you all could just take the information on the side?
I think we're going to go over a little bit of new business. If you want to hit on some of the high points there.
Okay. So, general fund, $2,523,142. Ferry, $100,575. Parks and Rec, $32,934. Rank, $39,479. Waterways, $183,540. Water and Sewer, $331,258. And that is from the Director of Accounts with DLR. So, and then you can dive into it more later on and the yada, if you want to.
That's good news.
Yeah, very good news. Two, five is a good number to be at for this town, and we're very excited. Hopefully, we don't know if that will be the standard going forward, but we are excited with this number for the time being, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I would like to say, oh, did the DPW just leave?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I did want to thank the DPW director. He did put in, I had requested a, one of the solar walk signs on Walden Street near the Cummings School, which was put in, I believe, yesterday, and I'm very appreciative of it, and I know the principal is very appreciative of it, and we're so appreciative that the principal and I would both like to request one on this side of the building. And I did talk to Director Callar earlier, and he has promised me that he will do his best to put one on this side of the building. So, thank Director Callar for that also.
Okay.
School Department report, I'll just say, because Ron's not here, and then I'll ask the superintendent to speak, but during Election Day, obviously, there was no school in the town, but I know from my wife that they did have a professional development day, kind of a district partnership professional development day, and from what I've heard, it was extremely beneficial. They had some fantastic speakers, so it was very helpful for them. So, I would say that for the superintendent, but I will let Lisa speak since she is here.
Sure. We had a couple of things going on during the last day. First and foremost, we had a number of students participating in the election and supporting the town, some community service hours, and certainly some students who are looking towards their future in the field of whether it be politics or history, and so, I got great feedback from Carla Downey on how great it was to have our students. Also, on that day, we had, we've been a part of a five district partnership with five other communities, Chelsea, Revere, Everett, and Walden, and Winthrop, and the Pacific Community, with the idea of collaboration and collaborating in terms of monies for professional development, sharing resources. This originally started back in the day when I was a special ed director here for the sole purpose of aligning our curriculum. We had students moving in from those communities, talking to the communities quite a bit, and we wanted to align our curriculum so that when we received students from other communities, they were coming in at the same entry points of close here too, in terms of what they were doing in English, Science, and Social Studies. And that has morphed into lots of creative ideas around providing large professional development activities with high-end sponsors and speakers that were important to all the communities. So, this past week, we sent our teachers to Walden, Revere, and Chelsea. They had a choice, it was very well orchestrated, and they did a lot of work around, actually, in education. The feedback has been excellent, and we intend to continue that in the future. We also had our educational support staff here in Winthrop doing some professional development on social emotional learning and how that looks during ESP in a classroom, given that some of the hands-on experiences and materials to take into the classroom. We then decided to make them a little bit uncomfortable and had the fire chief and action ambulance and some other folks do strong relief training. Research is very clear with tourniquet training, that tourniquet training and the understanding of how to use a tourniquet saves lives. Having tourniquets in all of our schools, we are building that has lots of people in it, and so if there was ever an intrusion in our building, having tourniquet training for as many staff members as we can is super important to the district, and so they were another level of staff members that we wanted to train. And then one of my bucket list items in working closely with the Chief of Police and the grant that Speaker DeLeo has helped us receive on student safety, we kicked off our trauma assessment team training in which we had somebody from the Virginia Model of Threat Assessment Training come up and work with 25 staff members, which included a number of members of the Winthrop Police Department. We invited some folks from Metro Police Department, the police chief from Chelsea, and then the rest of the group was my identified threat assessment team, which included principals, assistant principals, adjustment counselors. We also had Meredith Hurley from the town attend. The idea of that training was to teach us how to systematically identify threats within the system, whether it's a student threat, a staff threat, or an outside threat, and have a very specific protocol which includes the involvement of the police and fire, but most importantly, we followed our members of the staff. So, we're super excited about that training. It was eight hours long. I could sense after seven hours that folks were getting a little itchy. Me typically after 20 minutes gets itchy. However, the professional development was so good that people were able to stay. So, more to come on that. That's a project that is near the edge of my heart, and supports all the rest of the safety programs that we have in school, continues to connect us as a whole school community with police, fire, and the town. So, it was a great day. Lots of great feedback on all activities that day.
Thank you, Lisa. And before we go on to old business, I know we've talked about the election a couple of times, and I just want to thank Karen and all the staff that came down. It's an incredible amount of work, the police for doing details. They're there for 16 hours. I heard some issues in other cities. I didn't hear any issues in Winthrop, and thank you, thank the police for the details and all the work, and it's all led by our town clerk, Carla Vitale, who I know it's an awful long day for her. It's probably a 16 to 17-hour day for her, and she did a remarkable job, and it came, it went off very well, and I thank her from the bottom of my heart for all the work she does. These elections are not an easy thing to run. It might look easy, and it's seamless, and that's because of the good job that everybody does that makes it look seamless. So, thank you to the town clerk and everybody else that was helpful in the election process. Moving on to old business, there is a first order that the order the town council adopted on December 18th, 2018, provided for the borrowing of $3,920,000 to pay cost of various improvements for the Winter Center District project, so-called, is hereby amended in its entirety to provide as follows. That the town appropriate the sum of $5,523,334 for the purpose of financing and engineering, design and construction of water system improvements, sewer system improvements, drainage improvements, street and sidewalk improvements, and service connection for the Winthrop Center Business District project, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town managers authorized to borrow a set amount under the, pursuant with Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes to the town therefore, that all of, any portion of the amount authorized to be borrowed pursuant to this order may be borrowed throughout Massachusetts Clean Water Trust in a connection within the treasurer of the town manager and authorized to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust, and otherwise to contract with the trust and Department of Environmental Protection with respect to any such loans or loans, that the town manager is authorized to apply for, accept, and expand any federal or state aid available for the project or for its financing therefore, and that the action necessary to carry out this project, any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, less any such premiums or parts of payment or cost of insurance or such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this order in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by unlike amount. The amount, the total amount authorized to be borrowed by this order shall be reduced by the extent of any grants received by the town on account of this project. This came out of finance with a positive recommendation. I will ask the council clerk to call the roll.
Councilor Inghman. Councilor Callow?
Yes.
Councilor Christopher.
Councilor Boncorry?
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Farino?
Yes.
Councilor LaCanti?
Vice President Latieri?
Yes.
President Vecchia?
Do we need six more? There's not the rule.
So, motion passes. Yep. Next motion. I move that the town council transfer $89,836.86 from Fund 899, MWRA Water Capital Project Interest to Watersore Fund, account number 90152-580034, MWRA number, Project 5, DCR, Winthrop Shore Drive, and take any other action relative thereto. This came out of finance with a positive recommendation. Does not need a second. Please call the roll.
Councilor Inghman. Councilor Callow?
Yes.
Councilor Christopher. Councilor Boncorry?
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Farino?
Yes.
Councilor LaCanti?
Vice President Latieri?
Yes.
President Vecchia?
Motion passes. I move that the town council vote to raise and appropriate $57,714 for the school department operating budget for fiscal year 2020, thereby increasing the department operating budget from $21,275,036 to $21,332,750. Came out of finance with a positive recommendation. Please call the roll on this also.
Councilor Ringman. Councilor Callow?
Yes.
Councilor Christopher. Councilor Boncorry?
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Farino?
Yes.
Councilor LaCanti?
Yes.
President Vecchia? Motion passes.
Councilor Vice President. With the new business, you can push those in omnibus if you want to, if you want to call the numbers of them so you don't have to read every single amount of money there.
I would move that we take items four through 12 on the agenda.
Nope.
Well, I'm going to take out number 10 right now, please, because I'm going to ask for that to be an emergency motion because the school won't have hot water, and that would...
Could, could.
Could potentially lose hot water, which could potentially lead to no school. So, I think it's extremely important in an emergency that we have that fixed as soon as possible.
Uh, I will make, amend my motion to say items four through nine at this time be sent to the Finance Committee.
Uh, there's been a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? These are basically dispersments of free cash, which is a policy set by the Council, and, um, relatively small payments for unpaid bills, um, and thirty-five thousand to fund derelict properties, which we do every year, and, um, twenty thousand for pest control, which is another item that's ongoing. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those know, they've been sent to finance. Um, I would like to ask somebody to make a motion for twenty thousand.
No, it's thirty.
We're thirty thousand, but it is found a motion.
Number ten on the agenda.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to transfer thirty thousand from the Building Maintenance Stabilization, Stabilization Fund to the General Fund for the Athlete Cummings School Water Heater. And I would preface this with saying that it's an emergency motion 'cause the water heater is not working.
The water heater is definitely in need of repair. We are okay right now. We're not without hot water, but this is something that we consider to be an emergency. If, if, um, anyone would like to speak on this, Superintendent Howard, please.
Um, I provided the committee with a pretty detailed, uh, review of the water heater. The water heater is our original to the building. There are two of them, backup water heater and the current water heater, both seventeen years old. Um, and have been very good to us and outlived their warranty life by several years. Uh, but we did have somebody come out and do a full inspection on them. They've been able to repair them time and time again. And at this point, uh, they strongly believe that it would be a waste of funds to continue to repair one. Uh, at, at this point, they're strongly recommending a new one as the second water heater that's there is, uh, in just about the same condition as, uh, outlived its warranty as their original was at the building.
Any other discussion from the Council? Councilor DiMarco?
Do we have to vote for it to be an emergency motion before?
We, uh, that's been prefaced in Councilor Boncory's motion.
Okay.
Which was seconded by Councilor Calla. Any other discussion? Seeing done, I will ask for a roll call. Vote on this also.
Councilor Inghman?
Uh, excuse me, one second, please.
Councilor Callow?
Hold on Denise, one second, please.
It's on a separate issue.
Okay.
I'm sorry, continue on.
Councilor Callow?
Yes.
Councilor Christopher? Councilor Boncory?
Yes.
Councilor DiMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Farino?
Yes.
Councilor LaConti? Vice President Latieri?
Yes.
President Vecchia? Emergency motion passes.
Uh, do you have a question, Town Manager?
Yeah, thi- this was dealing with, um, the previous item concerning the, um, money for the financing of the Center Business District.
The bonding of five million?
Yeah, based off of... Yeah, you need a, you're gonna need the two-thirds.
We are gonna need the six months.
Yeah, okay.
And...
Not, not our rules under the state law. Yeah.
So, can we have a, we're gonna need a...
Vote at the next meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
A reconsideration.
We can reconsider it now and table it at the next meeting.
So, any one of us, anyone who's on the prevailing side, which is all of us, would just a motion to reconsider that item and table it to the next meeting. So, a motion to reconsider?
I'll make that motion to reconsider.
Made by Councilor Farino, seconded by Councilor Boncory. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it'll be tabled to the next meeting.
That's right. No, it's, it's fine.
And Councilor Boncory, you had made a motion from one through nine. There is also, I'm just gonna say this, a, a vote that, a motion to transfer twenty thousand from Count. Uh, we did the pest control. There's a motion to transfer fifty-five hundred from Town Council Reserve, Town Manager General Line Supplies, the fiscal twenty. Is there a motion to refer to finance on that?
Yes, I would make a motion that we refer eleven and twelve on the agenda to the Finance Committee.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye. All those know, the last caller. There are three petitions here to amend Winthrop Code of Ordinance and CBD Minimum Yard Setback Charge Center Business District to ten feet to twenty-five, RARE fifteen feet to twenty-five feet. Footnotes, ten feet to twelve feet remaining. Also, a petition, amend Winthrop Code of Ordinance, CBD Change Maximum Number of Stories to Two. And there is a petition to amend Winthrop Code of Ordinance, change maximum density from zero to one residential unit per two thousand square feet. I'm going to entertain a motion to...
I make a motion, no, that's the third of them. I make a motion to transfer, uh, uh, Article number thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen on the agenda, which are the three petitions to the Planning Board for their recommendation report back to the Council.
All right, now, do we have a, can we give them a timeframe as to when we want to hear this back by? Because we don't want this to go into a court duel.
I agree.
Forty-five days, one saving sheet.
No, the timeline's outlined in forty-eight, section five.
Okay. So, there's a motion by Councilor Boncory. There's a second by Councilor...
Second.
Farino. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those know, the ayes have it. Back to public comment. Yes, Mr. Malak.
Hi, Colonel Malak, Precinct Two. Um, just wanna make people aware that, uh, group of us are getting together to have a Winthrop Vision and Sharing Community Meeting on November fourteenth at the Robert DeLeo Senior Center. Uh, everybody's welcome, including Councilors, Town Manager. It's just really gonna be an open discussion type forum to get feedback about the CBD, uh, going on online and some of the feedback we found where people were saying, "Oh, we're not being heard" and those kinda things, which is great to hear about that, uh, Zen, what is it, Zen?
Zen City.
Zen City.
Yeah.
Fancy stuff.
That would be huge, tying this stuff into it. So, I'll say, everybody to get their input. Um, I'll be, I'll, I'll be the moderator for it and then we're still kinda aligning where the facilitator is. Uh, so, it will be a structured meeting, but being able to be outside of kind of the, like, the Roberts Rules and the community actually driving this, um, I think it's important that people are feeling that their voices are being heard. Uh, so, that again will be November fourteenth at the, uh, Robert DeLeo Senior Center, starting at six-thirty P.M.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Jack?
Thank you. I jacked up Precinct Three. Uh, I was looking for something in, in the, on the Town Website and I came across, uh, this, uh, study. It's under Grants in Economic Development. It was done in, uh, January two thousand and five and it's an open space plan. Many of the people that did this study, longtime Winthrop residents, to name a few, Bob McNeil, Sean Bristle, Richard Hohn, and Scott McGovern, Larry Holmes, for blessing, and Virginia Wilder. The plan, uh, is about over fifty pages and, um, like I said, you can find it on the Town Website if you wanna look at it. I've had this, uh, planned for a number of years. I've, I've read it a, a few times. To be brief about this plan, on the second page, on page three, uh, after, after much study, after much, uh, uh, input from citizens and the consultant team was Gregory and Associates. On page three, and I'm not gonna, uh, go on about this, I hope you all can read it for yourselves. And the last paragraph on page three, "It is hoped that this new improved open space and recreation plan will serve as a valuable tool to remind ourselves and make others aware of what limited space and resources we have and the importance of taking care of them." Uh, that's where I'm coming from. When, when, and I'm on the Parks Commission. I joined the Parks Commission for a reason. I joined the Parks Commission to, uh, save open space and parkland. There's many people that want to, uh, change this for development. I don't know how we got so far afield from this report, uh, that was paid for by the Town of Winthrop, uh, by longtime Winthrop residents and, and others to keep open space and parkland rather than develop seven point five five acres of Ingleside Park into a four-story, uh, development with no parking. It, it, it's just, uh, it's completely in the opposite direction of this well-done study. I hope you can read it. I hope you, uh, agree with a lot of people that we need open space and parkland. And, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jack. Any other public comment? Mr. Riley?
As you mentioned, there's three zoning petitions that are filed under the chapter forty-eight. And we just heard there's a forty-five day limit on these. Well, we filed a petition in May, a year ago, last May. We filed it under chapter forty-eight also. There's a forty-five day limit there. China had a, a minimum of record for ninety days. Council didn't agree to twenty-five days and then just dismissed. Hope this time it'll be taken seriously and given the kinda consideration that is due. Um, we were, I just counted six times in the last year and a half, in the last thirteen months, that we've been told that this review is going to take place. It has, in June, it came here and said, "Unless the Council grabs this and takes hold of it, I don't believe it's gonna get done." Well, Council didn't do it. I left it to the administration and it's not being done. Just hope that we can somehow come up with it. There's a lot of people who don't think this is a good idea. I think you ought to hear from them. And if you think it should stay that way, then keep it that way. But I think there's a dying need to have somebody review it. And I think that just simply because the promise was made so many times, it ought to be kept. And I don't understand why it wasn't.
Thank you, Tom.
Anybody else?
I just had one more thing.
Quickly, please.
Please, I'll just take a few seconds. Thank you. His question is to, uh, this Latieri. I've asked for, uh, a memo or brief about the project that the Manager's Office is doing in Ingleside Park. I was told that it was going to be on the Town Website and that's what I was looking for when I came across this, uh, other thing. I'm, I'm wondering if you could tell myself and anybody else that's interested where that, uh, progress report is on the Town Website.
I cannot, Town Manager. So, right now, um... Thirty seconds. Thank you. You're running such a good meeting.
I know.
This is the quickest meeting in my entire time on the panel. You should've had me on.
What have you been on the timeline, babe?
So, um, we are still in the design phase of this project. It's at thirty-five percent, or thirty percent design. Um, that's the limit of the money that we have in-house to continue to work on the planning of the Ingleside Park project concerning a water storage facility and some type of pumping. Uh, that said, we have written letters to, uh, Secretary Theo Herides. She's the Secretary of EEOA, the new secretary, concerning the dispersment of the environmental bond bill funds because we have not only this project involved in that, but Morton Street as well. No one is getting money for that environmental bond bill yet, but we are trying to push with our legislators to get a better timeline of when we can get that money because we're only at thirty percent design. To get to seventy percent takes hundreds of thousands of dollars. Then the permitting process will take a year after that as well. So, we still have a long, long way to go on this project. Um, so, as of right now, what we, the current status is, we are petitioning the state concerning, um, the environmental bond bill funds and when they will be released. Um, until we have an answer on that, the project will stay at thirty percent design for the foreseeable future.
Is there any documents that can be reviewed?
Sure, I can give the, I, we kinda have like a last status report from, um, uh, Woodard and Current that I could most likely provide on the website or some type of summary for that, um, just so people can kinda see what we're looking for. Um, but yeah, that's not a problem.
Great, thanks. Thank you. Uh, I have two public service announcements. One is the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm trying to look it up on the website 'cause I don't have a date. I see, is it January first? No.
No, it's November eleven.
It's ripped off on my...
It's passed.
So, it's passed, right?
Yeah.
And eleven nineteen is the fall form at the Senior Center at six P.M. I encourage all residents to attend if they have the time. Um, seeing no other, do any councilors have anything they'd like to say? Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
Motion by Councilor Calla, second by Councilor Farino. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you very much.